All right, I think we are good to go. It is 7:02 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person in consideration of ongoing COVID-19 health concerns, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the City Council Calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas. Boltinghouse.
Here.
Loudon.
Here.
Ryard.
Here.
Kring.
Here.
Inman. Josie.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
All right, we do have a revised agenda for tonight's meeting, so I would entertain a motion to approve our revised agenda.
Mayor, I move the City Council approve the revised January 18th, 2023 agenda as printed.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Davis.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Inman. Kring.
I.
Ryard.
I.
Loudon.
I.
Boltinghouse.
I.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we do not have any public presentat- public hearings tonight, so we will move into our special presentations. We do have two special presentations this evening. First, I am pleased to announce that the Mission Police Department has been awarded the Platinum Award for Traffic Safety from the Kansas Department of Transportation. This award recognizes community law enforcement agencies in the state for their efforts to improve local traffic safety. Points are earned in several different categories and awards are issued at the bronze, silver, gold, and platinum levels. I would like to invite Chief Madden to share some information about the award. Chief, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. And every year we partner with the Kansas Department of Transportation on several initiatives to improve traffic safety throughout the area. And I'm pleased to introduce Bob Hamilton, who's our representative from Kansas Department of Transportation to present the award and Captain Rue Lesen, who manages most of this paperwork that goes along with it.
Before anybody asks, no, I am not the plumber. I'm retired law enforcement officer myself of 33 years. And I was in traffic safety for 27 of those 33, so I know what your men and women here in Mission go through. Matter of fact, I've worked a lot of sobriety checkpoints with Captain Rusolo over the years and under our Assistant Chief Kurt Blaine. So I know these guys pretty well. A scary thing is when you feel old, you look at these young guys that were I was working with. I've been retired now for 13 years, so you feel kind of old. Some things that that we go through, we have what's called a step program. It's Strategic Traffic Enforcement Program. And if you've heard of click it or ticket, you drink, you drive, you lose. We have a Thanksgiving enforcement, a Christmas, New Year's Eve enforcement. And it's to get the DUIs off our off of roadways. People keep saying, well, our numbers are going down. I hate to tell you, but no, they're not going down. They're going right back up. And right next door, as we all know, marijuana was approved this past year, which has been right next door. It's going to fall right here and here on top of of our Johnston County Agency. So what these guys do out here, in my opinion, is is very important. And matter of fact, today I've been at KCK for the last two days, train a standard rice field sobriety test class for their new recruits. And they'll be trained tomorrow on four hours of drug enforcement. So we're trying to get the horse in front of the cart instead of vice versa, like government normally does. But just to show you how bad things were in 2021, and I can't give the numbers from 2022 because we're still making sure they're all correct. Because we're still waiting for some fatality reports and things to come in. But in 2021, we had 57,598 crashes that included 17,479 people that were injured. And this is a bad number, 424 people that lost their lives. And I didn't get time to look it up, but I'd be willing to bet you probably 50% of that were people that still are not wearing their their seat belts. Very simple, takes a couple of seconds. Pop it in there and and you're safe. So far this year, we, as of yesterday, we've lost 19 people in traffic fatalities. And I know we lost another one today, a 23-year-old driving a commercial vehicle that went off the road and rode and he was thrown out and the truck rolled right over top of him, not wearing a seatbelt. The sheriff that I talked to today said he'd probably survived if he'd had it on. So sometimes we're our own own worst enemies. So this year, we're giving out 31 of these awards across the state of Kansas. And I think I've got 16 of those 31. And I tell the other three guys I work with, we're called Law Enforcement Liaisons, we're all retired law enforcement, that I got the best district in the state of Kansas, which is the Northeast because of the numbers that these guys produce for me out here. And I've known these guys long enough, it's just an email or a phone call and I don't have to go harass them to get them to do anything. So this year, your police department, like you said, we have a platinum, which is the best award, gold, which is next, silver, and then bronze. And I think this is the fourth year in a row, Ron, or eighth year in a row, you've gotten platinum. So that tells you something about your your police department. AAA used to give these awards out through us. And we've taken that over now. So here in the corners, you'll see our Drive to Zero and our Kansas emblem, which I found out yesterday has changed. So the one you will get next year, I hope, will have the new emblem on it. So at this time, I'd like to present the chief and the captain, the Platinum Traffic Safety Award.
Right, thank you so much. We congratulate our outstanding Mission Police Department on all of their hard work and thank them for all of their efforts to keep our community safe. Our second presentation tonight is also related to public safety. So we're hearing this evening from Consolidated Fire District Two. Last fall, the city administrator and I had an opportunity to visit with Chief Chick, and we discussed scheduling him for quarterly presentations with the council. Consolidated Fire District Two provides invaluable service to our residences and businesses, and we look forward to being more connected to their activity moving forward. And extra thanks to their department for responding to a fire in Mission overnight last night. So very timely presentation. Welcome, Chief, and will you please come forward to provide an update on fire activity in Mission?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for taking time to to have me come to your meeting and speak with you. It is kind of strange that I get I scheduled to come to the first meeting and then we have a fire that very day. So our partnership with Mission PD is something that's really important to us. They take care of us on on calls where things are a little bit and we're unsure of what's going on. Traffic safety is always something that they're super involved in when we're out on on accident scenes. And so that that holds true on fires as well. So this morning, my understanding is that this fire was discovered by by the police department and that they reported it. And as they were reporting that, started to get calls by passerby's that were saying that there were smoking flames visible at the Popeye's Chicken. And so again, we very much appreciate our partnership with Mission PD and all the great officers there. And it works very, very well for us. So the investigation was mostly completed today on that fire. I'll give you a quick report on that. The probable source is a fire, the fryer in the kitchen. The in interviewing the employees, they they're they're very certain that they shut it off. But we have lots of indicators that the fryers were still still heating. And we had hot oil when we were when we were putting the fire out, boiling out of the fryer. So we're pretty sure that either either the fryer malfunctioned or was left on. And that's where the the origination of the fire was. We are very comfortable. It's this isn't malicious and it was an accidental fire. And and so Popeye's has been very cooperative and everything went really well through the investigation today. Now their private investor, their private insurance will come in and they can further investigate with our help. But it would be their choice if they wanted to do that any further. So in addition to that building fire, we've had one other house fire in in Mission already this month, was not significant. We were able to get it put out pretty quick and it didn't do any structural damage to the home. The the residents were displaced overnight because we had shut their utilities off in the process of putting the fire out. But I think they they've been able to return fairly quickly. So that's all we've had for structure fires so far this month. I wanted to take a few minutes and just share a couple of initiatives that we're working on in 2023. Number one, recruiting has been a challenge for police, fire, and EMS for for some time now. And and we've been looking at different ways to find great candidates before they get in 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 the pool and and have an opportunity to go to work for any of the departments out there. And and one of the other initiatives that our board has really pressed us to consider is how we can make opportunities that are for a little more diverse workforce. And that means having female firefighters. And we did use to have a female firefighter who left, but we don't have any right now. And and also being very open to to all minorities or or persuasions. So we're pretty excited. We built a an intern program this last year. And what that allows us to do is go out and reach into the education programs at the the different colleges in the area for people who are working on their fire and EMS certifications. And we're able to hire them and bring them on and they get to learn the ropes before they're certified. And and they work in prevention and they work in our training department and they get to ride out on the fire truck and and run calls and see how life really is when you do become a firefighter and EMT or a paramedic. And I'm really excited to share with you that I anticipate by next week, we'll be offering a full-time position to our first intern that we hired last year. And it's gone very, very well. So we're excited about that initiative. And and I feel like that our board allowing us the opportunity to hire that person and and train them and bring them along through their education has been really positive. So that's a neat thing for us and it's a it's a threshold that we've been really wanting to 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 cross. And and now that we have, we're feeling some accomplishments. So in addition to that, we, a couple of years ago, moved toward an ALS posture. And what that means is that advanced life support, meaning that we put a paramedic on the doorstep and an emergency medical situation within a matter of four, four and a half minutes from the time that you get a call into the to the dispatch. Our program's been super successful. We just had a a resident of the Fairway area come to the board meeting last night who suffered a cardiac arrest on the side of the road while he was jogging. Our crews responded in tandem with MedAct. We were able to resuscitate this individual and and he came in and presented his story to our board about what he had experienced. And and that's in great part due to what we're able to do with the advanced life support and our paramedics on on staff. So we are nearing maturity. We thought it would take about five years for that program to mature. Here we are three years in. And we will be mature with that program as far as the number of people we were shooting for to have proper staffing for paramedics by March or April of this year. And so we're really excited about that, hitting the three-year mark and achieving our goal goals already. In 2023, we plan to work on a a community project to develop a new strategic plan for the district and and set out some goals that we can work on the next three to five years to serve the community in a way in the way that they want to be served. And also, you know, consider the priorities that the the residents of the of the community have for us. So we'll be seeking help from our city partners and some residents to be part of a focus group and share information with us throughout that strategic planning process. And so we're pretty excited about getting started with that. And then last thing is that next week I'll be traveling with a small group of our firefighters to Appleton, Wisconsin. We ordered two Pierce fire engines a little over a year and a half ago. I'm really proud for two reasons that we were able to do this. Number one is that at the time, the prices of new fire engines were about $800,000 apiece. We went to work and we sharpened our pencils and we found out, you know, we really sat down and went through the spec and talked about what we had to have to be productive in in the areas that we serve. And we bought these two fire engines for $665,000 apiece. So we saved the taxpayers an immense amount of money. And and so we did that right before the prices increased 20%. I'm pretty happy about that. But we'll be going up and doing the final on those two engines. And one of those engines will be dedicated to serving Mission out of the the Martway Station. So with that, just wanted to provide you a few initiatives we're working on and I'll be happy to stand for any questions that you have.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for Chief?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much and look forward to having you back.
Thank you for having us.
All right, next we would move into issuance of notes and bonds, but we do not have any items related to the issuance of notes and bonds this evening, so we will move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has six items tonight. Our council committee is met on January 11th and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or a member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move that City Council adapt the consent agenda as printed items for A through four F.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Kring.
I.
Josie.
I.
Boltinghouse.
I.
Davis.
I.
Ryard. Thomas.
Yes.
Inman. Loudon.
I.
Motion carries.
All right, next we move into public comment. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on items not included on our agenda tonight, now would be the time. If you would like to comment on items related to the Mission Gateway Project, we will provide that opportunity later on on tonight's agenda. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are a part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated. And we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Emily, any comments online? Great, seeing none, we will move into action items from our Planning Commission. We do not have any items tonight from the Planning Commission, and so we will move into our committee reports. Councilmember Boltinghouse, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Finance Administration Committee met on January 11th and considered seven items. The Meeting Minutes, a resolution for the destruction of certain records, an award of contract for installation of a police department radio repeater, City Council capital asset policy, and a serial malt beverage application for Casey's General Store were approved earlier this evening under the Consent Agenda. The 2023 Proposed Reorganization and Reclassifications and Updates to the Governing Body Compensation will be considered under the Regular Agenda. Item 7A is the 2023 Proposed Reorganization and Reclassifications. Over the last year, and more specifically through the 2023 budget process, staff has evaluated the current organizational structure to ensure we are best positioned for long-term success. There are a number of trends and issues which are contributing to an environment where there are opportunities for improvement in order to more equitably distribute workload, address potential inefficiencies in workload, acknowledge changes in staff and department workloads, create staff development and training opportunities, promote and encourage talent retention, provide clearer expectations, and increase the likelihood of hiring the right candidates when recruiting. In addition to several immediate or short-term benefits, these recommendations are also based on long-term succession planning and employee development. The recommendations being presented primarily impact community development, the admin offices, and public works at this time. However, the city administrator is engaged with each of our department directors discussing structure and succession planning and, in the case of the Powell Community Center, preparing to address recommendations from the feasibility study currently underway. All changes, if approved, would become effective February 1st, 2023. The estimated first year salary and benefit impacts to implement the proposed changes is $31,368. Mayor, I move the City Council approve the proposed 2023 reorganization and reclassifications as proposed by the city administrator.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas. Ryard.
I.
Loudon.
I.
Davis.
I.
Boltinghouse.
I.
Inman.
I.
Kring.
I.
Josie.
I.
Motion carries.
Item 7B is about governing body compensation. Section 115.60 of the Mission Municipal Code establishes compensation for the governing body. Currently, it provides for an annual salary of $12,000 for the mayor and $4,200 for council members. The code also outlines that council compensation will be reviewed annually at the first regularly scheduled meeting in January. The current compensation was established via ordinance 1027 on January 23rd, 2002. A formal review has not been conducted since 2002. During the review in January 2022, council asked that be brought back for discussion in December of 2022 for potential action in this meeting in January 2023. The compensation structure for elected officials varies widely across cities in Johnson County. Recent council discussion has focused on establishing a salary policy which would allow incremental growth in the pay in the hopes of encouraging diversity in those choosing to file for elected office in order to reduce potential barriers to entry because of financial, childcare, or other related issues. During the December Finance and Administration Committee meeting, there was consensus to bring forward an action item in January. After discussion and consideration, an approach which involves increasing elected salaries commensurate with an average employee raise annually was proposed and is presented for final consideration this evening. This allows annual increases to be reviewed and developed carefully each year based based on mission-specific budgetary goals and current financial situation. If this approach is adopted, the 2022 increase would be 6%, bringing council salaries to $4,452 annually and the mayor's salary to $12,720 annually. If passed, the salary change would become effective February 1st, 2023. Mayor, I move the City Council approve the ordinance to revise section 115.060 of the Mission Municipal Code, establishing a methodology for reviewing and increasing governing body compensation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Yes, Debbie?
I would just say initially, I was probably not in favor of an increase, but it actually amounts to $21 a month for council. And based on gas prices and things of that nature, $21, I think, is miniscule in in looking at keeping quality people.
Yeah, Ken?
Also, I'd like to point out that each member of the council has the opportunity, if they want to decline that salary, they can do that on their own as well.
All right, any further comments? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon.
I.
Thomas. Kring.
I.
Inman.
I.
Boltinghouse.
I.
Josie.
I.
Ryard.
I.
Davis.
I.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Josie, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'd like to thank Vice Chair Loudon for leading the committee meeting last week as I was out of town. So I'll give her the opportunity to present tonight's report.
Thank you. The Community Development Committee also met on January 11th and considered five items. The Meeting Minutes and Acceptance of a Permanent Sidewalk and Utility Easement along 61st Street between Broadmoor and Barclay Streets were approved under the Consent Agenda. The Planning Sustainable Places Program Agreement and the Final Design of the Waterworks Park Improvements will be considered under the Regular Agenda. Item 7C, Planning Sustainability Places Program Agreement. Planning Sustainability Places is a program instituted through MARK, which provides federal and state funding for local and county governments in our region who want to develop and implement sustainable plans that address land use, transportation, and sustainability at the local level. Mission submitted an application for a pro project development grant to study Rock Creek Trail Corridor. This project site extends from Woodson to Row and from Johnson Drive to Martway. The study will address transportation and mobility challenges while improving the environment, promoting health and safety, building social equity, and supporting economic development. Determining where and how to build vibrant and active pedestrian and bicycle connections is the goal of the planning study. Mission requested a grant for $80,000 in federal funding for the project. And the program requires a 20% match or $20,000 for a total project budget of $100,000. MARK issued the request for proposal, RFP, for this project on November 28th, 2022. And the deadline for proposals was January 6th. Upon receiving proposals, MARK will coordinate and Mission will identify a proposed section committee, selection committee led by staff that will evaluate the proposals and conduct consultant interviews. Once the city has selected a consulting firm for the study, MARK will initiate and hold the contract with the consultant to perform the work. Work is slated to begin by the end of March 2023. By August 2023, the study should be completed and the outcome will be a plan and budget for a future project implemented. Implementation. Further, there will be an opportunity in 2025 for Mission to seek additional funding through MARK's Planning Sustainable Places Program to implement all or part of the project recommendations that come out of this study. Mayor, I move the City Council approve the Planning Sustainable Places Grant Sponsor Agreement between the City of Mission and the Mid-America Regional Council, committing up to $20,000 in local match for $80,000 in federal funds used for the study of Rock Creek Corridor improvements between Woodson Street and Roland Drive.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Josie.
I.
Davis.
I.
Ryard.
I.
Kring.
I.
Thomas. Boltinghouse.
I.
Loudon.
I.
Inman. Motion carries.
Item 7D, Final Design of Waterworks Park Improvements. In November 2019, the city contracted with Confluence to conceptually redesign Waterworks Park as part of an overall conceptual park planning process. The conceptual redesign had significant input from Citizen Stakeholder Committee, Water One, City Council, the Parks, Recs, and Tree Commission, and from two public meetings. In October 2022, council approved the 2023 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program, which included a project in 2023 to add restrooms and a pavilion shelter to Waterworks Park in conformance with the conceptual design plans. The next step in moving to construction involves completing the final design and developing construction documents for bidding. The final design process will include final construction plans and detailed specifications for performance of the construction work like engineering, utility placement, and an updated estimate of cost. After a competitive selection process, staff has recommended a contract with Stan-Tec. This project will be paid for from the Outdoor Park System Improvement Budget identified in the Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Plan, which is funded by Parks and Rec Recreation Sales Tax revenues, including 2022A bond proceeds identified for this project. Mayor, I move the City Mayor, I move the city council approve a contract with Stan-Tech for final design and construction services for Waterworks Park in an amount not to exceed a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Hillary?
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that this is adding restrooms to Waterworks Park, which is a much-desired amenity of Warrenwood residents, and we're very excited to see this happen. So thank you to Penn and staff and PRT for making this happen.
Any further comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Davis.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Crink.
Aye.
Riard.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Inman. Thomas. Loudon.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And does that conclude your report?
It does indeed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we move into unfinished business. We do have three items of unfinished business this evening, each of which pertains to the Mission Gateway Project. As we take up these items for consideration this evening, we will hear first from members of the city's team, then the developers' team, and then we will take any public comment prior to the formal council discussion. Council, if you have questions during the presentations, we will pause briefly between speakers to give you an opportunity to ask your questions before moving on to the next speaker. The city's team and the developer representatives will also be available later to respond to any questions during the council's discussion. Please save council comments other than specific questions for our presenters until after the relevant motion is made. Ms. Smith, will you please make the introductions and start our gateway presentations?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think it would be fair to stand before you this evening and describe our relationship with the Gateway Project as a journey. Tonight, we're here to discuss an important juncture that we've reached. One of the things that we've worked really hard to do over the last several months is to collect all of the information and the history of this project over the last sixteen years, and that's included in the packet and has been provided to you all and been made available to the public. Just trying to outline the history and the progress and the challenges that we faced along the way. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time, really any time this evening, belaboring or rehashing any of that history. I think it's all available, and we're happy to answer specific questions. As you know, for the last year, we've been working diligently with the developers' team and our city team to negotiate a development agreement that seeks to balance and evaluate a number of competing objectives to meet the goals not only of our community but of the governing body. We've had a long list of things that we've asked of the developer, and tonight we're here with what I believe to be the last outstanding piece of that puzzle and to ask the governing body to take action on the three remaining items that are outstanding. As the mayor mentioned this evening, you'll hear first from the city's team. We'll ask our land use attorney, Mr. Pete Heaven with Spencer Fane to speak first, our financial advisor Bruce Kimmel with Eller's Inc. to speak second, and then Kevin Wempe with Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond counsel, to conclude the city's city team presentation. And as the mayor mentioned, please, as each speaker concludes, if you do have specific questions, feel free to ask those at that time. So far, the council has approved the preliminary development plan for the project and an extension of the industrial revenue bonds that were granted in connection with the project. Those approvals occurred at your November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Since that time and at that time, we had presented a redevelopment agreement that the city team worked to negotiate with the developers' team that included terms that we believe align with council objectives that have been shared with us over the last year. So each of the members of our team will have an opportunity to kind of highlight the specific components of the project where they have lend their expertise and advice, but I do have to say that it has certainly been a team effort, not only with the city's consultant team and our deputy city administrator, Brian Scott, but also with you and the community as we've kind of traveled this road for the last year. So with that, I will be happy to welcome Mr. Heaven to share some highlights from the redevelopment agreement.
Thank you, Laura. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Pete Heaven, your land use attorney, and want to spend about three minutes talking about our redevelopment agreement. As we've gone through this process, you've all been given versions of the agreement. You should be fairly familiar with it, so my comments will be very brief. But a redevelopment agreement basically is the roadmap for the implementation of public incentives, and it sets forth the duties of a developer to earn those incentives. It addresses a dozen dozens of issues, as you know, in thirty-eight pages of gibberish to most of us. You see construction schedules, you see default provisions, you see budgets, conditions for issuance of bonds. All of these are to protect the city. We had during during the last few months, we've had some very lively but continual negotiations with the developer. And when all the dust settled, we came up with three concepts that we've not seen before in our development agreements. The first is an attainable housing requirement. And the developer will be expected to have at least ten percent of its apartment units dedicated to folks with an average salary of sixty percent of AMI or less. That will be throughout the complex, throughout the project. We also have sustainability requirements, which is also new. The apartments on this project will be required to attain a bronze-level certification from the National Green Building Standards, and other buildings will have to get Green Globe Certification, which is an industrial standard, from the Green Building Institute. And then finally, the developer has agreed to place three million dollars in escrow. Two million dollars of that money will be used to ensure that taxes are paid on the project during construction and assessments. And one million dollars will be used to ensure that all of the timelines and milestones set forth in our development agreement are adhered to. And if they are not, the million dollars or any portion left in escrow would be forfeited to the city. The city staff is very comfortable with this agreement. I think it affords excellent protection to the city, and it actually gives the developer a very good chance of success. So we recommend it for your approval, and I'll stand for any questions.
Anyone on council have questions for Pete? Pete, I had one question or just part I wanted to confirm or highlight, which is in in section two-point-oh-two of the agreement, when it's talking about the schedule, the reason to justify changes in the schedule is based on extraordinary market and other conditions beyond the control of the developer, and the availability of developer financing shall not excuse performance of the development schedule. So those are the reasons why there could be a delay. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then.
Inability to get financing is not excusable.
Okay, and then we do have a final deadline for phase one of the project. Is that correct?
Yes. We call it a drop-dead date.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pete.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'll try to be as eloquent and brief as Mr. Heaven. Probably an impossible task, but it's good to be back with you live here tonight for this discussion, and I just wanted to go through a few key points that I've made in memos in past months. You'll recall, we've had discussions pretty much starting in September of last year and culminating with a memo that I presented for your packet last week. But wanted to just sort of give you some of the the key points from my perspective as your financial advisor, and certainly would welcome your questions as well. So you saw this table, I believe, in Ms. Smith's email today, as well as a previous version in the memo in your council packet. But we wanted to get on the table for phase one what those estimated sources of funds, the so-called capital stack or funding stack, are estimated to be. So you can see, together with the roughly twenty-one million, twenty-two million of previous costs that the banks have recognized in terms of previous developer equity into the project, there is a total estimated cost for phase one of about a hundred and seventy-four million dollars. It's basically the twenty-one or twenty-two million of previous costs plus another a hundred and fifty-plus million to build out phase one in its entirety. Right now, as you can see, well, and actually, this is close to final terms. Banco ZK is slated to provide sixty-six million of construction funding as the first construction lender. BGO would be the mezzanine lender, providing thirty-four million, so a total of a hundred million between them. And then we're estimating the TIF bonds would generate somewhere in the vicinity of twenty-two million, twenty-two and a half million. Those that isn't really considered project debt because it's being repaid with TIF and CID proceeds or those revenues. It's really the hundred million dollars of private debt, the estimated twenty-two million of public funding through the the TIF and CID bonds, and then a total of fifty-one million dollars in both previous and new equity. And you'll recall, we discussed quite a bit back in November, the increased equity requirement. It's currently at about twenty-nine and a half million dollars, and that's really been a big portion of the developers' activities over the last couple of months to to find investors, both previous and existing investors, as well as potential new ones, to partner with them in providing that equity stake to complete the funding stack for phase one. I just wanted to add, I think we've discussed this before, but you might have questions. Well, how is it decided how much each bank is going to provide and how much will be generated from the TIF and CID bonds? And so I just wanted to note that in terms of bank underwriting, they really look at the total cost of the project, what its likely appraised value will be after completion. What are those operating cash flows on the private side, right, from operating and leasing out this facility or facilities? How much operating cash flow is likely to be available for debt service? And then what kind of market interest rates or interest rates, rather, they're looking to achieve on these loans? So when you put all those inputs together, that is kind of how banks typically go into or arrive at what they're willing to finance, and you can see here, we're looking at again about a hundred million dollars in bank financing. Also, on the SO bonds, the special obligation TIF and CID bonds, here, we're really looking at the estimated TIF and CID revenues. Those will be looked at by an independent third-party feasibility firm, and then also interest rates that investors would expect. There's other things like coverage factors as well, but that's where we're getting to roughly twenty-two million dollars of projected funding from the TIF and CID bonds, but all that will be decided when those bonds actually go to market. So I wanted to spend a couple of minutes on new equity. Again, we've talked about the previous equity that's already into the project. The developer has actually spent considerably more than this, both with previous debt and equity. But in terms of the underwriting, the banks or financing providers are looking at about twenty-two million of existing investment going into the sources of funds. And as we noted, given the funding amounts from OZK, BGO, and the estimated sale of TIF bonds, we're looking at about thirty million dollars as additional new cash equity being required to to balance services and uses of funds. We don't expect that to be the final number. Hopefully, that could actually go down. As I noted in my memo, it's possible that the construction costs could go down from what the developer has estimated most recently. They increased their estimate, and they have a contingency on their budget on top of that. And we're actually starting to see some construction bids come in either at estimate or even below estimate. So knock wood, but that would be a great thing for this project because that could reduce the equity requirement that they that they need to generate. On the flip side, you know, SO bonds, if if that generates maybe a million dollars less or so, then they might need a little bit more equity. But that's really not your concern, and we feel pretty certain that they're in the right ballpark in terms of how much equity will be required to to fund phase one. And then finally, as I noted in my memo, the developers have worked actively to identify potential institutional firms that would be interested in providing the equity for phase one or a portion thereof. The developers, of course, will be providing their own cash into this project as well as leveraging partners, and that will be an ongoing negotiation. Certainly, the developers want the best deal from these partners, so they have a better chance of at least making some rate of return on the project. And so that will be an ongoing discussion, but we feel pretty good about the information that we've seen from the parties that we've seen, and three of them in particular. And in addition, as I noted, they're talking with additional potential investors about possibly leveraging their interest in the in the project as well. And finally, this is impossible to read, but you've seen it before. I just wanted to put it up here because of all the pretty colors. We've really taken a close look at what kind of revenues the city is likely to achieve during the twenty-year TIF term and the twenty-two-year CID term if you were to approve those two tools here tonight. And we are estimating, I think, a very conservative basis, that the city would collect about nineteen-point-four million dollars in revenues just from phase one. So this doesn't include any transient guest tax or sales tax from the hotel. It doesn't include any, actually, any licensing fees. No, those aren't major, but they do add up in terms of other fees that the city would collect in addition to taxes. But you can see, we've got your special taxes, street and parks. We're not even including the county sales tax in this number, although that will continue to come to you. And then, of course, the non-TIF portion of this general sales tax will be a big driver, generating well over a hundred thousand dollars to up to, you know, over three hundred thousand dollars after the TIF expires in year twenty-one. So altogether, along with the special, the stormwater assessments, you can see how we get up to about nineteen or twenty million dollars. That's all I had for you. I would welcome any questions.
Any questions for Bruce? Bruce, I had a few questions.
All right.
Could you go back one slide just to make sure I get the terminology right? So you say here that Banco ZK and BGO have recognized twenty-one-point-eight million dollars of the developers' equity investment to date in the sources of funds. Does that mean that the bank lenders feel confident that that amount of equity exists, or could you explain that a little further?
Sure. Well, they are, I know they're more than confident that it exists because the developers can show receipts going back to two thousand and six that they've spent well in excess of that. I think in total, the developers have spent roughly sixty million dollars, both in equity and previous debt on this project. But when the banks, these banks are looking at doing this deal here and now in two thousand twenty-three, they're basically saying that a good chunk of those previous expenditures are sunk costs and that they're not willing to, or they're only willing to recognize about twenty-one million as part of this deal as really solid, defensible from their perspective, equity into the deal. So when you look at the existing equity plus the new equity, it's roughly an estimated sixty-forty split between debt financing, the the hundred million dollars, and then the old equity, the new equity, and the TIF bonds is are really considered as equity from a bank perspective as well. And so you roughly see about a sixty-forty split there.
Okay, and then in that twenty-nine million dollar gap, there was about eight million that was expected to come from the developers. Is that correct?
Right.
And and what have we seen in terms of proof of that, or what is your competence level in those funds?
I haven't actually specifically asked for proof of that. I mean, we know that GFI has the financial capability to provide that, and they've represented that. You know, I think it really depends how much they ultimately decide to put in themselves will depend on how favorable of terms they can get from their investment partners as well.
Sure.
I would expect that they would want to have most of that amount, if not all of that, just because they want to retain as much of the cash flow and the net profit as possible, as opposed to giving it away to outside partners. But I would expect that to be an act of negotiation.
Okay. And then we talked before about the percentage that the bond proceeds make up in the deal, and I believe it was about fourteen percent of the phase one funding.
Right.
And that that's on the low end. Is that right of deals like this typically?
Right, Mayor. Typically, we would see, every deal is different, of course, in terms of its complexity, the funding sources involved, the costs involved, the level of of public demand and desire to see this specific project happen, a specific project happen. But for this type and size of project, an expensive project, I would expect to see net TIF and CID funding being in excess of twenty percent of the of the total project cost.
Okay, and then you had made reference in prior prior meetings that the And prior prior meetings that the develop, and I think you referenced it again tonight, that the developers rate of return is on the low end of market. Is that right?
Yes.
All goes according to plan. And so we're not seeing any sort of windfall or anything with the current TIF CID package that's proposed.
Mayor, no, definitely not. That that has not changed and. Bringing in equity investors will reduce the rate of return further. I I think at this point, though. I mean, they've said as much to you that they're in this to see this completed. And to certainly recoup their past and future investment in this. The only way to do that is actually to do this project, both phases one and two.
Okay. And then I think you had said that the LOIs come from institutional firms. I I know we're not allowed to see a lot of detail on that. So could you just elaborate on your degree of confidence that any or all of those will materialize into funding commitments?
Well.
I'm gonna ask the same question, the developers team.
Yeah, so I I would answer that at two different ways, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to focus on the. Development workbook that was provided, and I know I've. Gone on and on about that in previous meetings, but there really is a level of detail and sophistication in this. Financial plan, this iteration of the financial plan that we didn't see in previous issues. Not that that those ones were bad, but especially with GFI's involvement, they've really, I guess, I would say up the game in terms of. Giving me the behind the scenes information in terms of development budget, the financing plan, the operating performer. So I can see all the inputs. I can see how they relate to each other. I can ask some questions about. Various assumptions they've used and just make sure that the overall financing plan hangs hangs together. That's kind of the big question, you know, is is there a missing element? That's really going to blow this up? Or is there something behind the scenes that's just not computing correctly? And I've been able to confirm that those numbers do hang together. So. Of course, they still need to get the equity. They still need to close the financing. We still need to do the bonds. But. With those assumptions, and I think they're reasonable assumptions, you've got a financing plan that makes sense for phase one. As to the equity providers, you know, we weren't really in a position to. Bang on their doors and say, how real is your level of 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 interest? But they did convey. In a number of different ways and to different degrees of specificity that they've really looked at this project. They've looked at the numbers for this project. Their perspective rate of return as potential equity investors. And the biggest institutional investor, the one that indicated that they could provide up to the full thirty million. I I think in their letter, they conveyed probably the most. Level of preliminary interest, you know, certainly more work to do, but they they indicated that they've dug into the numbers. They really understand the deal and would have an appetite. In addition, that firm has a lot of activity in Kansas City at the metro. And so this didn't seem like it would be completely out of their wheelhouse, either in terms of the type of the project or the size of the investment. And I could see that being pretty credible and viable. So that. You know. You can't say absolutely positively it's going to happen, but those. Gave me a sense that, yes, they've done the homework. They've done the legwork. And they're working hard with not only those firms, but as I noted, some other firms as well to try to get the best deal for the project and to make sure. That the funding stack comes together.
Yeah, and understanding acknowledging that we can't control for for all uncertainty. Is it? Is it fair to say that you have as much confidence? As possible and more competence than the past and this capital stack and budget with the degree of. Specificity and transparency that you said that you've gotten this time around that hadn't been the case before.
Mayor and council, I would definitely say I have more confidence now than I had in November. That's an easy one. And I would say that. It's a it's a balancing act. I feel like they've gotten as far, they've given us as much as they really realistically can. Before the council takes these actions. And I know that some of you would like, you know, absolute certainty and confidence that everything is stacked up and ready to go. I'm afraid I can't, honestly, I can't give you that absolute certainty, but I feel like, yes, they're they're checking the boxes and I don't have. As I stand before you tonight, I don't have this feeling in my stomach that, oh, you know, we're really. Out on a limb here. I feel I feel pretty good about where we're at. I feel actually very good about where we're at. And that this is the right time to be considering these items.
Okay. And then I think there was one note, and I forgot to ask Pete, but I think you can also cover it. About the nature of the bonds at issue. Could you explain what special obligation bonds are and? Whether the city is or is not obligated on those bonds?
Well, mayor and council, I'll say it, and then Kevin Wimpy, your bond attorney, will say it three other times.
Multiple times.
Yes, um, special obligation bonds are payable only from pledged revenue sources, which in this case would be the clearly identified. TIF revenues and CID revenues exclusive of of the 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 things that you're keeping. As part of the deal, the TIF, the tax revenues that you're keeping. So when the underwriter is looking to attract investors, potential buyers. You know, they know exactly which revenues are on the table for these bonds. And the investors will know that too. There's no so-called moral obligation. There's no contingent obligation. There's no. Liability of any sort on this for the city to make up any shortfalls if they occur in terms of those TIF and CID revenues. So it's almost the polar opposite of the general obligation bonds that you normally issue. There, as you know, we might be using park or street sales tax. But ultimately, it's your full faith and credit backing the bonds. And and the investors know that they know you have this double A plus credit rating for the city's geo bonds. And so you can sell your debt, your geo debt very, very easily easily. Because investors just know, no matter what happens, you will pay the debt on time and in full. And with SO debt, special obligation debt. Investors know that it's contingent totally on the project and. They have a different risk appetite, those investors do than ones that buy your geo bonds. So it's, you know, it'll be. I think you'll get a kick out of it, Mayor, when you read the official statement for the SO bonds, the number of times it says in there. These are payable only from the pledged revenues, right? It's just to make sure that nobody can mistake this for a general obligation of the city. Yeah.
Thanks for answering my multitude of questions. Anything else?
Like to ask.
Yeah, Trent?
Just one more point on this absolute certainty discussion we were having a few minutes ago. I think, isn't that, correct me if I'm wrong, sort of a false choice on deals like these? Like, there's never absolute certainty on any deal. And what we're simply saying is, given the information we have now in liaison with you as our counsel, that's. We're making the decision based on what's available to us at the moment. Like, there's never an absolute guarantee on any of this at any stage, regardless of who the developer is. At that time, is that sort of a fair?
Yeah, Mayor and council member, I think that's a fair summary. You know, I I think. It's been very reasonable for you to have. Collective. Healthy skepticism about this and asking a lot of questions. But you're right, we don't typically get into this level of detail and scrutiny on. A normal housing development that might be coming and asking for some level of incentive. So. You know, I think it's been good that you've pressed for more information. You've asked me to give you more information. That's, I think, been a very healthy and positive thing in getting to this point. But you're right, there is never absolute certainty or very, very, very rarely. And that would only be on teeny tiny deals, you know, where. Maybe Laura, the the fish bonds that we did a million years ago. Right, right. So. I think I think you're on the money there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Let's see, next up, Kevin.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, council members, Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond council. Start to go back a few minutes. Bruce has definitely awarded his his bond council credentials for his response.
Excellent.
Dubious as an honors I I can provide there. So I've been tasked tonight to briefly summarize steps from tonight, should you choose to proceed to get us to ultimately a bond issuance. And again, the the actions before you tonight are the two ordinances that would. Terminate the existing community improvement district and TIF plan at the site and install the new ones. So we've gone over those in some detail, but again, those build the state law vehicles that allow the city to capture those CID and TIF revenues that ultimately would secure and repay the bonds. So this provides, again, should you proceed, choose to proceed tonight. It provides the opportunity to get to a bond issue. And as Mr. Heaven provided, the development agreement sets forth the rules contingencies going forward that would govern on the path to a bond issuance. So if we proceed after tonight, the types of activities being undertaken, the develop developer team would proceed with. Checking off the boxes on those contingencies. Again, you know, finalizing their private financing stack, getting to construction contracts and generally mobilization on the side or prepare to mobilize once the financing comes into order. The the city team and the whole development team would reengage with the bond underwriter, who's in charge of marketing the bonds to the investors. We'd also reengage with the revenue consultant. I think Bruce mentioned that's the third party that provides a screening of the pro forma and anticipated revenues. To provide that third party overview that is ultimately becomes pretty instrumental in marketing the bonds to those investors. And also we'd work on the offering document. Which is really the prospectus that's, you know, viewed by investors, you'd buy the used by the underwriter to market the bonds for sale. So while all those things would proceed following tonight's approval, there would be future council actions. We'd come back to to get your approval of similar to other bond issuances. One would be your authorization to release that offering document to the public. Which would really, you know, push the train down the tracks on the bond issue. And second would be the state law required ordinance for the mayor, city clerk to authorize to execute. Any documents necessary to issue the bonds and actually proceed to issue into those bonds. So again, to summarize, if you approve tonight's actions. We proceed with those activities leading towards marketing of the bonds. Ultimately, if the private financing stack and the bonds come into order, that provide the construction financing and and lead us to what we'd hope would be mobilization. Resuming construction on the site. So I think it's included in your packet. Those future council actions I mentioned wouldn't be coming to you in the next month or two. These types of bond issuances and all those activities on the very short end take several months. So it would be at a hopefully a near future date, you know, several months down the road. So with that, I'd be happy to, you know, try to answer any questions you might have on the process.
Questions for Kevin? Yeah, Hillary.
Thanks. Oh, there we go. This might be for Bruce too. I'm just wondering if there's a specific maximum timeline for the private equity to. Finally be secured before getting to the bond issuance, you know, it's anticipations for, you know, three to six months, maybe to get to bond issuance, but. Is there a maximum timeline somewhere written into the development agreement or expectations on that?
Yep, in the exhibit to the development agreement, there's the construction timeline for resuming construction and outside dates for completion. I think those are what we'd point to for. You know, resuming the the activities listed there. Up top of my head, I don't have the exact date for when we'd expect that those things to come into order.
And the the development agreement doesn't contain a a date to get into the bond market, I think, as we've referenced. In order to proceed with issuance of the TIF bonds, the TIF. Project plan, if it were to be approved, that ordinance has to be published immediately. Which starts that twenty year clock ticking. So it is certainly in the developer's best interest to move quickly through that process. To preserve as much of that twenty year time period as possible. In the development agreement, and I don't know the specific section reference, but there is. A timeline from bond issuance, a requirement that within four months after bond issuance, the developer is to resume construction on the site.
And Laura, that phase one drop dead date would be another reason to move quickly, correct?
Yes. So the the individual project milestone and component milestones that are included as a part of the redevelopment agreement. Would also incentivize at work to incentivize the developer to move quickly through that process.
And I think, Kevin, you said several months. I thought before we'd talked about like three to four months to bond offering, what sort of a reasonable window? Then typically for that process?
The the three to four month estimate would would probably be on the short end, given the complexity of this type of transaction. That that'd certainly be our hope. And and as Ms. Smith explained, you know, once the TIF plan is approved, that twenty year window starts. And so the further down the road you get, the fewer dollars you can capture and so that just. You know, in effect shrinks your bond issue. So for that reason, we think the developers, you know, heavily incentivized to proceed quickly.
Anything else for Kevin? Thank you, Kevin. So I will now invite the developers team up to make a brief presentation. I think we've got Matt on this.
Good evening. I'm Matt Valenti with the Cameron Group. This is Stan Spiegelman, Andy Ashwell with GFI, together with the developers for the Gateway Project. Mayor, city council, thank you for all having us here tonight. You know, we're very excited to be before you tonight. We've worked very hard with your city team to get to this point. We believe that the project plan and the development agreement. Will enable this project to move forward and be developed in a class A, you know, as a class A mixed use project. Consistent with the city's goals. And having a successful mixed use project. In conformance with your comprehensive plan. In the last month, you know, we've been asked to show that we had solid interests from some equity investors. And just to kind of reiterate some of what Bruce touched on. You know, one of the letters of interest that we have is a a group in Syracuse that's a. Legacy developer turned investor. And they've actually invested in two Cameron projects in the past, one of which we're we're in under construction with currently. The larger institutional investor that Bruce referred to. That has property here in Kansas City also has been an investor of GFI since two thousand and fourteen. So, you know, we're very confident that. You know, we have the relationships in place, you know, amongst our two groups to go out and source the equity at this point. You know, the entire developer team is very excited to be able to move it forward. Get to the next step to finalize the equity, the lender. The lenders financing, construction financing, and and also the bond documents. I'll take questions.
Questions for Matt and his team. Yeah, Debbie.
What percent of the full development do you have commitments on relative to retail, hotel, etc.? What percent of the whole?
We have, there's ninety thousand square feet of synergy that's committed. Phase two, well, let me start with phase one. There's ninety thousand square feet of of entertainment committed. There's about, I call it fifteen thousand square feet of small shop that we've had leases with. Each of those, you know, we'll have to do amendments to. Once timing is finalized so that we can, you know, restart those leases. But those are the ones that we've been, you know, with since since the last go around and continue to have conversations with. As you know, we're the hotel developer and we have the franchise agreement with Marriott for the Element Hotel. So that's a committed. Franchise agreement that we have. And then as of this point, we don't have any commitments for the office. So that's something that, you know, that we would have to work on for phase two.
And how many square feet is the hotel?
That's two hundred and two keys, two hundred and two rooms.
Thank you.
All right, Matt, I did have a couple of questions. Say that I promised, I think, we're coming when I was asking our other team members. So one is, it sounds like, you know, you have longstanding. Work with two of these potential investors. So how, what would you say your confidence level is at this time that one or more of those LOIs will materialize into funding commitments in a, you know, reasonable timeframe?
Yeah, we I think we have, we all have good confidence that we have the the relationships in place to get some of them over the over the finish line. They're all gonna have additional due diligence as the. Bond documents come together and as the loan documents come together to, you know, do their due diligence. But. Outside of those three letters that we were able to to bring to the table. You know, this month, we've got additional investors. As a matter of fact, GFI was here today touring with an additional investor. I'll let Stan, if you want.
Sure.
Sure. Sure. Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council members. You know, we're not, we're focused on getting this project built. As Bruce mentioned, we have close to $60 million of capital invested in this deal. And we know that our best opportunity to, to, you know, get back any of that capital is to build our way out of it. And as developers, we're willing to do whatever it takes with our capital sources to, you know, make sure that the project becomes fully capitalized. Because again, that's our best chance of recovering the capital that's already committed. Today, we drove through with another investor, looking at a bunch of opportunities within Kansas City, within Kansas City, MSA. You know, we're not initially before today's drive-through, we weren't sure of their appetite for development per se, because there's also, you know, the ability just buy existing, existing things, but they were actually very intrigued by Mission Gateway. So today I feel better than I did yesterday. And, you know, because of our need to build our way out of this and the large equity commitment we've already made as GFI, it's our, it's certainly our largest non-revenue generating investment at the moment, but it's amongst our largest investments ever. You know, we're not, we're not just kind of going one at a time. We're spreading the net very sort of widely. We're willing to discuss, you know, co-GP opportunities. If there's somebody that says, hey, I can help you bring the capital, but I need to share in the leadership here. We're talking to multi, to nationally recognized brokers to say, hey, we're willing, we're, we are seekers of capital for this project. We think the location is great. We think the real estate is good. We think we're going to get there with the city in terms of the public-private partnerships. So we're casting as wide a net as possible. And, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't want anybody here to get the impression here that we're going to negotiate for the last dollar. We're going to negotiate for, you know, the quickest dollar and we're going to move as quick as we can to get that done. You know, our goal is 90 to 120 days. It sounds like with the bond offering, it could go a little bit longer, but we're, we're not, you know, we're not going to go down the road with one group, have something come up and then say, let's start the process with another group. We're trying to cast a very broad net here.
And by 90 to 120 days, you mean to that bond offering stage? Or to secure that investor?
As you know, we need to bring everybody together for a simultaneous close. And that's what, that's what Stan was getting to.
Great. And I think Stan, you made a reference to your, you know, existing equity commitment. And I was asking, you know, Bruce and his confidence in the additional, you know, eight million plus of equity that would be needed, needed from your team. Could you share your confidence level or availability of those funds?
You know, we're constantly raising capital for our own account as well as selling assets, which is part of the way how we finance business, our business. If we need to sell an asset to create more liquidity that we may have at the moment, we'll, we'll do that. So it's not a function of, hey, how much cash do you have at the bank today? It's where business and we have $60 million locked up in this deal. And if that means we have to sell an asset or, or do whatever it takes to do within our, on our GFI side to put in that incremental five, eight million dollars, whatever is going to be needed to get the deal done, we'll do it. It's, you know, we're committed to this project and I, you know, just since COVID began, which is when the, this kind of deal was coming together and then it came apart, partly driven by a capital markets, partly driven by inability to issue bonds in early 2020. We've committed $10 million of capital into this project between payment of taxes, having to, you know, invest capital to get as far as we've got now. We've had to pay interest on our existing loan. We've had to pay down our existing loan a little bit in order to keep them extend maturity. So I can tell you between all of our assets, including ones that are, you know, like we have a large hotel portfolio. So those were obviously big, became big cash users. The largest financial commitment we made through COVID of new capital was to this project. So we've done that historically and we're going to do what we need to to get this over the finish line.
Okay. And along those lines, I just wanted to ask Matt or give him an opportunity to reconfirm some statements, I think, from September in response to a question from Councilmember Krang, I believe, which were, we can absolutely build this and we can do this. Standing here today, do you still feel confident in that assessment?
Yes, absolutely.
Right. Any other questions for the developers team? Yes, Trent?
I have one. It's not related to the financial discussion, but just, we had spoken a few months back about the viability of the existing structures on site. Has anything changed in recent months since that discussion to change that assessment?
No, so we, yeah, we, so we did have structural engineers look at all the structures, I believe it was in May, and they provided analysis of everything. Before we go to get permit, they're all going to be reevaluated. They have to be. And the lenders will require it. You all will require it. We will require it. So they're all going to be reevaluated. There was nothing earth shattering in the first analysis, but again, you know, months have gone by, weather has happened. So they're going to be reevaluated. I'll leave it at that. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Matt, can you just give us an update on your existing liens, the mechanical liens? Give us a status report on those.
Sure. Yeah, I might actually let Andy handle the exact status of them.
So we are essentially right now in a tolling agreement with the lien claimants, tolling time as we go through the process with, with everybody. I'm in touch with the lien claimants and updating them. In fact, I've got a call with them next week. So we're updating them and probably on a conference call with all of the lien claimants, attorneys, representatives, let's say every two months and have been for probably the past year now.
And I might point out too, that just for a point of reference, sections 8.04C and 10.06 in the redevelopment agreement will require that all those mechanic liens are satisfied at bond closing. And we won't release any of the bond proceeds until that we, we have been able to confirm that those have been satisfied. So that's a provision and a protection included in your redevelopment agreement.
And they're, you know, that's included in the, in the budget and the lenders would expect the same thing at closing. They'll be satisfied.
And anybody writing a new dollar into this transaction is going to want to make sure that we're clear collateral.
Sorry. All right. Any further questions for the developers team or for any of our other presenters if you forgot something? All right. Seeing none, thank you.
Your Kimmel would actually like to make another comment if you, if you don't mind me.
Welcome back.
So after my comments, Mayor and Council, I just thought, you know, I'm going to be back in front of you, whether it's two months from now or three months or four months or six months about the financing. And I just wanted to make sure we didn't have any confusion or misunderstandings. The equity is typically one of the last pieces in, as, as you know, and it can change again as project budgets get finalized, as all the other nuts and bolts get figured out with the debt and the bond issuance. So Councilmember Thomas asked about the timeline for the equity versus the bonds. And what I really wanted to put in your mind is that we can really hang our hats on to a great extent and follow the lead of the banks involved in this. Sometimes the banks get overlooked, but they're putting $100 million into phase one. And they're going to have very specific ideas of how much of that equity actually needs to be fully committed and actually in the bank, literally as equity before they're going to close on their lending and start releasing funds. So I can't tell you that if, you know, $30 million is the number, that all $30 million of the equity will be fully in the bank at the same time that we're doing the bonds. But from my perspective as your financial advisor, it's much more important that the banks are willing to release their funding. Because they, they, you know, they'll actually be on the hook and could lose $100 million if this thing doesn't succeed. So they'll be very rigorous, very diligent in making sure that the developers have the right amount of equity into the, into the pot, if you will, at the right time before they close and release funds. And I feel very confident that we could do the same. It'll probably be a very good chunk of the equity that will be accounted for in the bank. But I just want to make sure that, you know, if it's the time to do the bond issue and $20 million is, is, you know, in the bank, you're not saying, well, what about the other 10? That will come because the banks wouldn't proceed without, you know, a good amount of confidence that that's coming along the way in good times. So I would just want to clarify that point and we'll certainly have more discussions as Kevin mentioned. You know, you're not authorizing the bonds now. We'll certainly have more discussions about that hopefully this spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Any further questions of council? Seeing none, is there any member of the public who would like to comment on items 8A through 8C regarding the tax increment financing plan, community improvement district petition or redevelopment agreement for the Mission Gateway Project? If you want to make a comment on these agenda items, please complete the signup sheet available at the podium. Or if you are participating via Zoom, please note your desire to speak in the chat feature. We will take comments from in-person attendees first in the order in which they appear on the signup sheet. For Zoom speakers, you will be elevated to speaker status through Zoom in the order we receive comments in the chat following comments from tonight's in-person attendees. Please note that speakers will be limited to three minutes per person. When you make your comment, whether live or on Zoom, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Do we have any signups for live comment or anyone from the audience who wishes to comment? Seeing none, Emily, do we have anyone online? Right. Seeing none, we will now move on to council consideration and discussion of items 8A through 8C on our agenda. Item 8A is an ordinance making findings and terminating a fourth amended tax increment financing redevelopment project plan and adopting a fifth amended tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for Mission Gateway. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council approving the ordinance, making findings and terminating a fourth amended tax increment financing redevelopment project plan and adopting a fifth amended tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for the Mission Gateway Project.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any council discussion on this item? Yes, Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you. And thank you to the development team for coming tonight as well as our city team. And I was going to say, public comments, but we didn't have any. So that was easy. Similarly to my vote against the preliminary, preliminary development plan and the IRBs. Back in November, I will also be voting against the TFC ID and Development Agreement tonight. And I don't believe this project is the right fit for the entrance to our city, and therefore I do not find it incentive worthy. Additionally, I am concerned about the lack of a funding plan for phase two and incomplete financing for phase one. Although I will not be voting in support of this project, I do applaud the mayor and our city team for getting as far as you have been able to get in the development agreement. And thank you for all your work on that. Thanks.
All right. Further comments from council? Yes, Debbie?
As someone who's been on this project since the initiation in 2005, we've seen ups and downs. And as Laura indicated, it has been a journey, but there's a commitment. There's a commitment based on a phenomenal piece of reality. The real estate is amazing. It's close to the Plaza. It's close to everything. The concept is there. It's taken longer than any of us wished it would have, but there's a commitment. The developer's committed. Our team is committed. We have attorneys that have committed. We have Bruce with Ellers that's committed. And this governing body has been truly committed to making this happen on behalf of the community. It's a solid project. It just needs to move forward. We get frustrated by the timing. But I think committed wise, I think we're all on the same page and I'm hopeful that we move forward and get this completed.
All right. I also had some comments that I wanted to make, just because I know, as has been referenced by both Councilmember Thomas and Councilmember Krang, this has been, you know, a long, a long and winding path. And just what I wanted to say for the record is I feel very fortunate as mayor to have full faith that each of our council members up here working alongside of me has the best interests of Mission at heart. And I know that that can't be said probably of all mayors and their councils. So I just really want to recognize our group and also the work of our tremendous staff and consultants on moving this forward. And so my view, we were each elected by our constituents to exercise our best judgment towards the goals of protecting our city and moving it forward. Tonight, we face what some might consider an unenviable task, casting votes on a high visibility project with a whining and bumpy pass. As our staff is well aware, I can tend to be a bit of a control freak and I'm a fairly risk adverse person as well. I blame my natural tendencies combined with my training as an attorney. The other attorneys in the room can probably sympathize with that. And so operating with uncertainty and the, you know, the level of uncertainty that can be involved in any large development agreement is not within my natural comfort zone. And I, like all of you, I think, you know, want all of the information and to have every question answered. And so that's why I've worked really closely with our staff and advisors over the past 11 months to arm ourselves with the best information possible to make the best decision for the city tonight. And so I wanted to outline what I think are a few key points from what we've heard from our team. So you've heard from our financial advisor, Bruce Kimmel, that he has been provided a high level of detail and transparency with respect to the project financing over the past year that was not provided in prior iterations of the project. And he now feels more confident in the phase one capital stack. You've also heard from Mr. Kimmel that at this and past meetings, that city participation is needed to move this project forward and that the developer will not be receiving any windfall with the incentive package that's been negotiated. You've also heard from Mr. Kimmel posing as bond counsel, my apologies to directing the question to him, that these bonds will not be backed by the full faith and credit of the city, which means that there's no financial risk to the city in moving forward with this deal. And you've heard from our attorney, our land use attorney, Pete Heaven, how the redevelopment agreement has been designed to protect the city's interests and advance council objectives, including strict conditions that must be satisfied for bond proceeds to be distributed, a drop dead completion date for phase one of the project, inclusion of a new $3 million escrow to further protect the city's interests, and the inclusion of sustainability and attainable housing elements. And so as much as I would like, you know, we can't preordain the outcome or control for everything. But at some point, we have to trust that we have equipped ourselves with the best information possible and have controlled for risk as much as reasonably possible. And I think thanks to the help of our city team and the great questions from council throughout this process, that that is exactly what we've done. And so in my view, we've now created the conditions for the greatest likelihood of success as we are able, given that this property has been, is and remains privately owned. So I intend to vote yes on the tip for this project because I now believe it is more likely than not that the project will be successfully completed. And that successful completion will mean substantial new revenues and valuable city asset, community assets for our city. In short, a yes vote is the best option available to advance the goals and objectives of our constituents and our governing body. But I acknowledge that reasonable minds might differ on this. And again, really appreciate the work of our governing body and staff and the development team and our advisors for all engaging in good faith to move this forward to a vote tonight. Any other council comments? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Riard?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Wolltinghouse?
Aye.
Inman?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Thomas?
No.
Chozy?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Mayor Flora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well stated, Mayor.
Thanks. So next we'll move to consideration of item 8B, which is an ordinance terminating Mission Gateway Community Improvement District number three and authorizing the creation of the 2022 Mission Gateway Community Improvement District in the city of Mission, Kansas. I would entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move the city council to approve the ordinance terminating Mission Gateway Community Improvement District number three and authorizing the creation of the 2022 Mission Gateway Community Improvement District in the city of Mission, Kansas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Inman?
Aye.
Chozy?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Wolltinghouse?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Thomas?
No.
Riard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Our final action item for this evening is item 8C, a resolution approving the fourth amended and restated redevelopment agreement for the Mission Gateway Project. I would now entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt the resolution approving a fourth amended and restated redevelopment agreement for the Mission Gateway Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Krang?
Aye.
Wolltinghouse?
Aye.
Chozy?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Thomas?
No.
Riard?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Inman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. That wraps up our old business. We do have one item of new We do have one item of new business this evening, which is a resolution ratifying the expenditure of funds to purchase a Ford F-450 truck for Public Works. Laura, will you please share your information with the council?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, we talked last week at the committee meeting about the requirement of Shawnee Mission Ford that in order to acquire the truck in this calendar year, we had to sign the purchase order by January 13th, so the dates didn't align very well. So council committee last week gave us consensus or consensus for me to go ahead and assign the purchase order. So we were bringing that back for ratification of the expenditure with Shawnee Mission Ford, the purchase of a Ford F-450 truck for the Public Works Department in the amount of $63,340. And this was a budgeted and approved capital expenditure in the 2023 budget.
Right, I would entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move the City Council approve the resolution ratifying the expenditure with Shawnee Mission Ford for the purchase of a Ford F-450 truck in the amount of $63,340.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Riard.
Aye.
Choosie.
Aye.
Thomas. Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move into our council, our council comments. There being no further business items for consideration tonight. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share? Yes, Trent?
Just like to make an announcement that our Ward One Community Meeting will be next Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 PM here at the Community Center. And you can look for Hillary and I to give you an update on city happenings as always at that time.
Great, yeah, Debbie?
Just as a reminder, the Ward Three meeting will be held here tomorrow evening from 7:00 to 8:00. And we hope to have all people come and ask questions.
Yeah, Hillary?
Thank you, Mayor. You gave me the interesting microphone tonight, which is just fine. Yeah, I just wanted to say that Councilmember Davis and myself and some city staff members were able to attend the State of the City's luncheon today from the Northeast Johnson County Chamber. And Mayor Flora presented on behalf of the city of Mission and did a fabulous job representing us and had a good handful of jokes throughout the, throughout her speech. It was lovely.
Thank you, Hillary. Yeah, Ken?
You have before you a document that reminds us of 20 years ago, January 15th, when the council, both of the city of Mission and the city of Countryside at that time, came together and established the consolidation of those two cities and put me out of a job. I have a little PowerPoint that I've asked Emily to put together, and I'm going to ask her to pull it up if she can at this point in time. This, this report basically gives you a little bit of the history, but it's been 20 years since that consolidation occurred. At the time, it was a very divisive debate. There were, there was a task force, if you want to go forward on the slide, to the next slide. Basically, the Homes Association of Countryside was established in '37. And the city of Countryside, the city of Mission, and Roland Park were all incorporated at the county commission meeting on July 2nd, 1951. So all three cities were formed at that time in the same meeting. The rumor has it, I don't know if it's accurate or not, but the rumor has it that the Countryside Homes Association had paved their streets and didn't want to pay for paving the streets of Mission at the time. And so they petitioned to incorporate separately and remained what was referred to as the Donut Hole of Mission for nearly 50 years plus until 2003. There were several attempts to consolidate prior to the January 15th, 2003 consolidation action. And all of those failed except on the fourth time we were successful in getting consolidation. Next slide, please. These were, this was a household number. There were about 295 population, six square blocks, and 133 homes and a church. The Trinity Lutheran Church was basically the city hall for Countryside. We actually deferred any of their Homes Association dues so that we could use the basement of their church to meet. And that was one point in time when church and state did, did convene together. And we used their basement on several occasions for many functions. Next slide, please. At the time, and I attribute the success to the consolidation process to a marvelous task force that was created back in basically June of 2002. And they spent about 12 meetings throughout that six-month period to study the issue. It was the, the team of the task forces, the task force members that were appointed, three from the city of Mission and three from the city of Countryside are listed here. So Ron Appeltoft, he was Ward Four council member, and he was a former council member of Countryside before his and his family moved to Millhaven. And he also remained the treasurer for a number of years with the city of Countryside. Debbie Crane was a brand-new, I think, council member for Ward Three at the time. And she joined that task force along with Richard Peak, who was the chair of the Mission Planning Commission. And from the city of Countryside, Barbara Newfeld was the Country High, Countryside Homes Association Board. She participated. Amy McInerney was Countryside Council and Treasurer Representative. And John Walker, who is still today resident of Countryside in Mission, he was the former Countryside Mayor at a time when Ron was council member with the city of Countryside. And so that was the team of six individuals that participated and interviewed. And Debbie can speak to the process that that took in order to get the recommendation from the task force to consolidate. I told you that it was a divisive process, and the council at that time decided to put this to a vote of the city. And that vote took place December 3rd, 2002, and passed two to one in favor of consolidation. The state statutes in Kansas require that both cities concur with the process. So if there's any consolidation, the city that's, that's joining, both cities that are joining have to take action, have to adopt resolution either as a council or through a vote process, and then have a joint resolution to consolidate. And so that's the process that took place. I know that Mission had their council meeting, adopt their resolution in favor in December. And then finally, in January, January 15th is when the consolidation occurred. Next, please. I just wanted to recognize, I know that the lettering here is small, but the, at the time, many of those that were not in favor of the consolidation have since participated in the, in many of the functions of the city of Mission and have made enormous contributions to moving forward the activities in the past 20 years. Those include Mayor Ron Appeltoff, who is then resident of Mission, Largo Columbach, these are alphabetical. She was Citizen of the Year in 2014 for the city of Mission and also on the Mission Arts Council. Cheryl Carpenter-Davis, at the time of the vote, was the president of the Countryside Homes Association. And she's been participating in the Mission Family Adoption Committee and supporting my effort as council member. Myself, I, I, along with Debbie Crane and others, participated in the Tobacco Free Kansas effort and the municipal environmental ordinances that were discussed and adopted at that time. There are two members of Countryside, Kate Deacon and also Carrie Dickerson. Both are the coordinators for the Mission Market. Jackie Gamison, at the time, was the chair of the Tree Commission. And in fact, Mission adopted our, well, took over our Tree City USA sign and, and has kept that going since that time. And Jackie is now on the PRT and has been involved in the PRT since that group was merged. Dr. John Holliman was a prominent Shawnee Mission Rotarian. He was instrumental in the new clock that was established on Johnson Drive. And he was the second mayor of the city of Countryside back early on after it was established as a city. Mike Lee, you know, is a chair of the Planning Commission and has been chair for some time. He was sitting council member in 19, in 2003, when we consolidated. And he's maintained that, that activity. Mark Radesener has been chair of the Parks and Recs Commission. He also has been involved since he's in journalism and taught at Johnson County Community College. He's been involved with the Mission Magazine on the editorial team. And he also served Countryside as council member. Leanna Ritzinger is a resident of Countryside, and she has represented Mission on the Drug and Alcohol Council, representative to the UCS. And Martha Summerall, who has been our clerk, municipal clerk for the city of Mission. She actually was a resident. Her father owned a home, home on 61st Terrace and is longstanding resident of Countryside. Michelle Van Dorn is now the new Mission DAC representative to UCS, and she's a Countryside resident. And there are several volunteers and others that have participated in the city of Mission's activities over the last 20 years. So I just wanted to say thank you. When I moved to this area in 1991, 30 years ago, I didn't know that Countryside was a separate city than Mission. I didn't really know that there were like 21 cities in Johnson County at the time. But through the person who sold us our house, he was then, at the time, the mayor of country, city of Countryside. And he invited me to serve on the council, and then he left the city. And since I was president of the council, I became mayor for eight years. And I couldn't give up the job unless I could do something such as this in order to accomplish the consolidation. So with that, thank you. And I don't know, Debbie, do you have any comments that you would like to make?
No, I think there's another journey that we went on. You know, you had people in Countryside that were definitely for it because they wanted the, the capability that Mission had to offer, police service, trash service, the pool, things of that nature. And then you had those that just wanted to stay within their own spectrum, if you will. But they were all very cooperative, and it was, it was a great time. So the merger went very well. So thanks to your leadership too, Ken.
Well, I couldn't do it without Lauren McConnell, who was mayor at the time. I served as mayor when Sylvester Powell was still alive. And I know that, I don't think the Countryside would have done it as long as Mayor Powell was here. And it's, as soon as Lauren McConnell took over, it became more comfortable, I think, in, in order to do that. I also must say that Chief of Police Bob Sturm, at the time, was serving as our police chief. And I believe that Keith Drill was also the judge, municipal judge. I don't know if it goes back that far. And Dave, I'm not sure if you were the attorney at the time or if it was your dad, but I know the twice that far. And I, I also believe that Chief Madden was, at that time, a police officer with the city of Mission. Anyway, thank you. I've taken up much of your time. I appreciate the timing.
All right, thank you. Any other council comments tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of the boards, commissions, and committees. First is council members Crane and Thomas for Sustainability Commission.
Just wanted to mention, at our last Sustainability Commission meeting, the cities of Shawnee and Roland Park joined us and wanted to find out more about how successful our Sustainability Commission has been. And they want to pursue the same, the same thought and move forward with that. They had several questions. I think Hillary and I each spent some time with, with them afterward too. So they were very respectful of the way the commission conducted itself and the success it's had. And they want to move forward on both cities.
Yeah, just in addition to Debbie, I just want to add that Ellen Parker was voted in as chair and Lauren Schmidt as vice chair. And the group worked through this year's upcoming budget and is going to be exploring updates to their scorecard.
All right, next up, we have council members Loudon and Riard for Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
All right, yes, so PRT, welcome to new members, Sarah and Angela. We're really excited to have them there. I think they were just kind of taking it all in. Lots to take in, for sure. Mohawk part update. We're looking at possibly changing out some of the materials that were going to be used on accents on the bathroom because there's a much longer lead time on that than we originally expected. The electrical and plumbing has been roughed in, and steel should arrive at the next month and a half. Pins ordered, benches, picnic tables, and trash cans. And that should all arrive in the next three and a half months, and we're expected to see that done by April. We also voted in, well, I say we, I just watched it. But we have a new PRT chair. Nicole Sullivan is going to be the chair. And vice chair will be Kevin Schmidt. So really excited to see some new blood in those positions. And the Tree City USA poster contest is going to begin here soon. So you can come by Powell and vote on posters. So, yeah, that's my update.
Great, and now we'll hear an update from Councilmember Boltinghouse on the Mission Magazine Editorial Board.
Yes, thank you. The editorial board met last week, and we received the unfortunate news that Denise Elam has left the, working for the city. And so we're kind of struggling to fill the story gap in her absence. But knowing the team, I'm sure we'll be able to come up with a resourceful alternative in time for the next edition of the, of the magazine. So that was the big news from the last one.
That was a staffer with the publishing company we work with, right?
Yes, and also she took the photographs of us all last fall.
All right, and finally, it's Councilmember Choosie with the Family Adoption Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. We actually have our wrap-up meeting tomorrow. So since the last meeting, I have nothing new.
Great. Let's see, next up is my report. So this evening, we do have a number of appointments for consideration. The first is for the position of city treasurer. State statutes require the city appoint a city treasurer who is a qualified elector of Johnson County. Ms. Smith, can you briefly explain the need for this appointment?
Some on the council will remember that for many, many years, really until 2018, we appointed a resident to serve in the capacity of city treasurer. In 2018, we appointed our accounting manager, Debbie Long, as the city treasurer. Mr. Martin was able to research that and determine that it could be brought in-house. Many cities handle it in that fashion. But the city treasurer did need to be a qualified voter in Johnson County. So several of us who don't have that address currently could not step in and fill that role. And so really, the city treasurer, from a statutory standpoint, is responsible for filing and publishing a quarterly report of city finances. That is all information that is compiled by our finance and accounting staff, dropped into a specific form. So we, at this juncture, would recommend appointment of our city clerk, Robin Folks, to serve as the city treasurer.
Great, thank you. Tonight, I put before you, Robin Folks to be appointed city treasurer. Is there a motion?
Move the City Council uphold the appointment of Robin Folks as city treasurer with the term expiring January 18th, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Crane. Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Choosie.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Riard.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next, we have the appointment of a number of city officials. These appointments are called for in our ordinances and are considered annually. So I put before you tonight the following for appointment. Keith Drill as municipal court judge, Jeffrey Austin, David Bell, and Keith Drill as municipal court judge, Jeffrey Austin, David Bell and Peter Simonsen as municipal court judges pro tem. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that the city council uphold the appointments of Keith Drill as municipal court judge and Jeffrey Austin, David Bell and Peter Simonsen as the municipal court judges pro tem.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just think we have such a close knit community. Peter Simonsen is Mayor Powell's grandson. And he has grown up in this community with his grandfather as the mayor for all those years. And it's kind of neat that he stayed in the law arena and stays with the city. So.
Okay, great. Robin, will you please call the roll?
Inman.
Aye.
Riard.
Aye.
Thomas. Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Crane.
Aye.
Chosey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, each year, we appoint third party advisors and consultants who assist us on various projects throughout the year, who you've also seen tonight. I put before you the following for appointment. Gilmore and Bell Bond Counsel, Ellers Inc. Financial Advisor. And Pete Heaven with Spencer Fane, Land Use Attorney. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointments of Gilmore and Bell for Bond Counsel. Ellers Inc. is Financial Advisor. And Pete Heaven with Spencer Fane as Land Use Attorney for the City of Mission with terms expiring January 18th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Okay, on the expiration. Got it. Okay, Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas. Loudon.
Aye.
Chosey.
Aye.
Riard.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, next is our city administrators' report. Ms. Smith, do you have any items you would like to share with us tonight?
I took a lot of grief earlier today from the folks you just reappointed. I think this is the first time we've ever had, they wanted to know if their reappointments were going to be based on their performance earlier this evening. So I think we'll be careful in how we manage that. I did want, there was a comment online that we didn't share at the time of the council's approval of the contract for the design of Waterworks Park. So I did just want to share that Suzie Legg was participating or is participating online. And she said, "Thank you for coordinating the Waterworks Park project with a timeline for the Rushon Elementary rebuild. Our neighborhood and the school community appreciate the city's investment in our youth." So wanted to make sure we shared that for the record. Your, I would echo council member Thomas's comments about the State of the Cities. Always an enjoyable and entertaining event. And you learn a lot about what the other cities and always proud to be there representing our city. And we can definitely hold our own with all of the other communities that are members of that Northeast Johnson County Chamber. So that was a nice event today. The December interim financial reports were included in your packet. I think those aren't audited numbers. So there are some things that will get cleared up in, in the audit. And we're working through those. And so we'll present that more comprehensive picture as we move through that audit process. But overall, we ended the, the year in a really strong position. There were some revenues that we had anticipated. For example, receipt of the Planning Sustainable Places Grant that were reflected in the 2022 estimated revenues. So there are some categories where it looks like we may have missed the mark, which wasn't really true. Those funds will come in next year. So all of that will get cleaned up through the audit process and we'll come back and share that with you. Overall, sales tax performed and continued to perform, you know, very, very well. It sort of carries us forward. I did go online and look and see, we didn't have a reduction in the final certification of our mill levy for the 2023 budget. You know, sometimes we've had that small adjustment in it, the mill levy that the council approved in September is the one that will carry forward into the coming year's budget. And I think, again, I, I would just thank everybody on the council, on the staff, on our consultant team and on the developers team. We've, it has been a journey to get here and I think the hard work starts tomorrow morning. So we'll look forward to really working to get this financing pulled together and bring that project up out of the ground. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have, but that's all I have this evening.
Questions for Laura.
Just want to say we're glad you're back.
Thank you.
It's not been easy.
Glad to be back.
And it's a reminder that next month, we're back in City Hall. Is that correct?
Thank you. Appreciate that. For our committee meetings, we will be back in City Hall on February 1st.
Okay. And we do not have any need for an executive session this evening. So before we adjourn tonight, I would just note with, for the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missioncast.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.